Okay, we'll call the meeting to order and stand for the singing of O Canada.
(Singing) O Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all thy sons command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise above true north, strong and free. I'm a firm and wide O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Okay, record of attendance, Linda, you good? Any declarations of the conflict of interest? And approval of agenda, any additions or deletions? And we have additions, 11A, request for decision, town hall upgrade. 11B, 79 Main Street for the public hearing. I think we'll move the public hearing up if no one is opposed to that. Counselor Landry?
Yes, your worship, two items I'd like to add. Number one, update on the external staff review, RFP. And also, I'd like to have a discussion on the CAO evaluation for this year.
Okay, motion to approve the agenda with the changes.
So moved.
Seconded. Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, so, does anybody oppose 11B being moved up? The public hearing for the Hope Center? Okay, we're good with that. CAO? I know your voice is not going well tonight, but...
Thank you, worship. So, the town was approached by the Hope Center to, for a piece of property to develop a new building off of Main Street in Adelaide. And so, the proposal was that the town would sell the property to the Hope Center for a dollar. The Hope Center would subdivide the property so that they had enough for their development on the back half of the property, and the front part of the property would be used for public parking, developed by the town. And so, in order to sell land below market value, the town has to, we can do that as long as we're selling to a not-for-profit, but it is subject to a public hearing. And so, in order to do that, you have to hear from the public this evening. It has been advertised, and anybody from the public can speak on it if they have any objection or if they support it. And later this evening, you can, you can make your decision on the matter of whether to sell the property to the Hope Center for a dollar.
Okay, good. So, so what happens here is we'll allow the public to speak, and we'll ask three times if anyone wants to come forward. If you do wish to speak, you just come up to the microphone and let us know your name and, and where you're from, and you can speak. Do you want to...
Yeah, I just wanted to, that was publicized, if I'm not mistaken? In the paper?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks. Bye.
Okay. So, I'm just gonna ask the first time, would anybody like to come speak to this issue?
Uh, don't, yeah, it is working. My name is Doug Thistle, and I'd just like to say, I'm probably behind the project. It's coordinator, working with the Hope Center. And the purpose for the acquisition of the piece of land is to build a permanent home and a modern, up-to-date building for the Hope Center to operate out of. I feel the employees, the clients of the Hope Center certainly deserve it and need it. And also, involved with this, there will be a fenced community, a fenced area, gated area. They have six vans on the road, which they have no, nowhere to park. They're just squatting on someone else's land, so we do have, in the plan, room for eight vehicles inside. Also, a green space for activities for the clients, and, as I said, a building that they can call their own and their home. And anyway, it's a sizable project. I think it will improve that area, help improve it. I know there's some development being done there now. And I understand plans for a parking lot, so, anyway, it's all positive, and I certainly want to acknowledge and thank the support I've gotten from the council and various members of the staff. Jeff's been very cooperative with me in meetings, and Carolyn and her staff upstairs have helped us greatly. It's taken a while, but we're almost to the end, and we look for a successful completion, and we're planning to get this project underway, hopefully in April or May of this year. Any questions?
Thank you, worship. Thank you for that presentation, and I just want to thank you and your organization, your non-profit organization, for taking this big project upon, upon yourselves for this, for the Hope Center, and I wish you all the luck in the world, and I know this council is behind it 101 percent. We look forward to working with you and your organization, and I'm sure, and I'll speak for myself and the rest of the councils too, I'm sure, that anything we can do to further your, your work and endeavor to get this project on the go, we will work with you and along with you to make this happen.
Yep, we appreciate it.
And thank you again.
Thank you, Doug.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Would anyone else like to speak to the, to this issue? Anyone else like to speak to the issue? I'll ask one more time. Would anyone else like to speak to this issue? Okay, here are no one. We will, we'll discuss this later through the council meeting. Okay, approval of minutes, Town Council, December 10th, 2015. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Approval of minutes, Town Council, December 22nd, 2015. Moved and seconded. Discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor? Contrary? Motion carried. Business arising, terms of reference, proposed amendments, UNSM Town Caucus. Okay.
Thank you, your worship. I noticed the appended document is probably that one that we weren't really sure of when we had our meeting the other day, and really, we don't have a fresher version of that, of our notes of the things that we did agree to, at least some of the stuff that we had discussed at our meeting on Tuesday. Or am I reading it wrong? That's the old one we have. So, I'm a little reluctant to vote on this tonight, given the fact I don't see the final draft, so I'd like to have it moved to the committee of the whole, your worship. I'd like to have it tabled.
Okay.
So moved?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Gas tax formula. So, we received, we received this extra. Do you want to speak to that, CAO? Go ahead.
Just very quickly, this is, I think, I hope it represents what I discussed with you two days ago, and if it does, then a motion to accept it and submit it as feedback on the CanMac gas tax study would be appropriate. I did want to mention, Counselor Dawes had raised a suggestion about population and the, the labor shed that the town of Yarmouth has, and how that affects the use of our infrastructure. Unfortunately, the labor shed data is derived data. It isn't data that's directly available through Statistics Canada. It's, it's a statistic that we were able to pay a company to, to calculate, so it is not readily available for all municipalities, so it, it isn't necessarily something that, without somebody paying that cost, those numbers can't, can't be readily used.
Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. If, if there are no, no comments or any questions from around the table, then I would make that motion.
Need the motion first, so I need a seconded. The, the motion is to, it's not my motion, sorry.
It was...
There's no motion, but it's...
The CAO's.
You want, what's that? Go ahead.
So, it would be to submit the feedback, this has the town's feedback on the CanMac gas tax study, to the Towns Caucus.
Okay, I heard half of it. That would be the motion I would make. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Jeff.
Okay. Yeah, I heard it. It's to submit this as our response to the gas tax allocation formula, okay? Just, I, I would, I would add one line, just to be clear about the assets, the assets being the primary focus, okay? That's only to make it very clear that that's where we were going, okay? Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Question.
You do? Go ahead.
Well, just a point, your worship, and this is to the mover, the motion has been made. You've recommended excellent recommendation, your worship, for that wording, but that should be reflected by approval of the mover and the seconded before we vote on it, and where that's going to be inserted in the motion. So maybe, maybe the mover of the motion can, maybe the mover can let us know where that exactly is going to be inserted.
You okay with that?
Yes, I am. I did, unfortunately, I apologize to everyone, rather than verbally acknowledging, I did it with my...
Okay. Who seconded it? Did you? You okay with that addition?
Yeah.
Okay? All right, good. Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Municipal restructuring applications. Oh, I see it, okay. So, Town Council write to the Minister responsible for, for the Utility Review Board, as well as the Minister of Municipal Affairs, and ask that the financial analysis applied to future municipal restructuring application include an analysis of the future financial viability of the municipal structure options, where they fully fund their depreciation from own source revenues. Okay, sorry? Go ahead.
So, is this the, just for clarification, our poor CAO is dying with his voice, and this is the motion, I think, that was the rewrite of, that we suggested before, is that correct, CAO? Then I would like to move that motion, your worship, as presented.
Good, thank you. Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Questions.
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Grants to organizations, presentations, discussion and direction. So, basically, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. I circulated an email to council, I received feedback from yourself, your worship, I thank you for that. And the thought is, is, your worship, is, we have met traditionally here every year, groups have come in and done presentations, and from some of the organizations I've talked to, they feel that it's a must-do situation, when in reality, many of the applications are fairly clear by the virtue of the applications themselves. So, the question has been asked, is do we necessarily have to sit here for a full day and listen to groups who maybe, A, don't want to come in? Could we not somehow do it as a voluntary process, so that groups who do want to come in can come in, and we can schedule meetings that way appropriately, rather to, rather than sit here during the presentation, just as a thought?
So, so there's that option, or there's not doing it at all, and asking for the information that we require. So, I know Counselor Dawes was looking for, where else have you sought funds, as, as opposed to just coming to Town Council? So that, I believe, Linda, you were gonna add a line that said, yeah, Linda added the line that said, where else have you applied for funding? Because we always ask that question. So, my thought is, all or nothing, simply because the conversations we've had with a lot of these organizations, they've said, you know, if some come in and I don't, I feel like I am, you know, at a disability, kind of, so, I mean, I'm, I'm for just sending in the applications with all the information. We just need to be clear on what we're after, and, and nobody asks for anything extra this time around, but, except for that, and, and Linda did direct, did address that. So, I, I'm all for, for sending the application. Counselor Mckayzick?
Thank you, worship. Jeff, question is, I've sat around the table for a bit, and we had, this discussion has come up about a balance. If you're asking for funding, and if you, your balance sheet shows a balance of monies, are you, are you eligible to ask for funding? If you're showing money on your balance sheet, that you have money left in your, in your bank account, are you eligible for funding from our grants to organizations? I know, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, if you showed a balance, you wasn't eligible some time ago, but we've, I don't know, we strayed away from that, or we didn't stray away from that? I think we've strayed away from it. Am I wrong by, by bringing this up, or, not so much bringing it up, but asking that question? Is there a way to look at, find that out? You don't have to find it out tonight, but seems to me, if you carried a balance on your sheet, you already had money. And if you're looking to get more money in your coffers to do whatever you're going to do, I don't know. I don't know how, it seems to me that we, we didn't, we didn't at one time pass funding for that.
Okay, I'm gonna keep your light on there.
I'll just...
Okay, yeah. CAO?
So, the policy says...
Yeah.
The council, council, as a matter of policy, will reduce its grant to any organization that has an operating or accumulated surplus of funds.
Will reduce?
Will reduce.
Okay. Okay, so that's up to the individual counselor at that time?
I guess that's up to the individual counselor to apply.
Okay. I wasn't really sure how that, because it's been some time, so.
Yeah.
Okay, that's great. All right, thank you very much.
It's on every application form.
Counselor Landry?
Yeah, thank you, your worship, and to get into the CAO, poor man. Our sister units, Argyle, Municipally District of Yarmouth, Digby, I don't believe they, do they do these sessions like we've been doing? I'm just curious. Do you know offhand, or...
I don't think they do. I can ask the question, but I don't think they do.
Okay.
So, I'm, I'm agreeing with you, your worship, if all or none, and frankly, I've been sitting around this table for over 10 years, and we've gone through over 10 presentations with usually the same groups coming in with, and oftentimes, they read their presentations. And I, I agree with what you said when you commented that they feel that they're gonna be at a disadvantage if they don't show up, and they're not really at a disadvantage if they don't show up, because actually, we can read these applications. So, to me, your worship, I'm totally in favor of not bothering about the grants to organization meeting, and I'd like to make a motion, your worship, that this year, that applications for grants to organizations will be brought in and reviewed by individual counselors and following a spreadsheet process as per normal.
I seconded. Moved and seconded. Discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor? Oh, sorry, I didn't see that. Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. I, I agree and I disagree at the same time. I agreed with Counselor Landry last year, when he emphatically expressed his belief that it was our duty to be here and listen to the, and, who are you winking at? Are you winking at? No? So, there are a number of new applicants, new grant applicants this year, perhaps, perhaps we do owe them the respect and the time to sit and listen to them. Perhaps they have something that they would like to tell us. Also, other, other previous or regular grant applicants, perhaps there is something, some, something new, something else that they would like to share. I agree that, yes, it does take a lot of time. It takes a lot of our time. It also takes a lot of time from the applicants to come in for the day. But perhaps we could, and there was, through the email thread, there was a suggestion that we leave it up to the applicants themselves.
Yeah, there, that was in the thread?
Yes, that was in the thread.
Yeah, it was in the thread.
That I agree with. That I do.
And I, yeah, I emphatically disagree, but that's okay. I do.
Disagree. That's all right. Okay, I'm leaving now. I'm leaving the, the table up to the rest of the winks around the room. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. Okay, who's next? Okay, Counselor Landry?
Thank you, Counselor Dawes, and you're quite right, but last year, considering that at the time of the meeting, unknowns to me, my poor heart was only pumping 28 percent of blood to the brain, and now that I've had a great plumbing job, I'm now up to about 80 percent, so I'm thinking clearer now, so...
That is the worst excuse for a change in direction.
Thought I'd get a good laugh.
I have ever heard.
Now, you'll note that. You can use that in one of your presentations.
Put that in the minutes.
But, but no Counselor, I, what is the old expression? I've seen the light, and, and as a result, maybe, maybe, it may be time for a change. And I, I agree, like, anybody has the right to come to this council for a presentation. And if any groups, we could easily set time aside at a meeting or whatever, or sometime prior to, for people who, who want to present. There's no difficulty to that, and I'd welcome that for any new groups.
Okay, Counselor Mooney?
Question to the CAO, your worship. Jeff, we have a smaller pot of money this year, after this year's budget, or last year's budget. I think we're, have we taken $20,000 off our grants to organizations? Is that one of the compromises in the budget this year?
Just one second. I'm gonna let him answer that.
Sure.
But it'll come right back to you. Go ahead, CAO.
Yeah, I'll have to look that up.
Okay.
I don't recall that. I remember that we, we didn't make available to ourselves after the grants process that the other $10,000 last year. I didn't recall what we did affecting this year. I'll have to look that up.
You'll check on that, and, thank you.
Okay, Deputy D?
I can be supportive of Ken's motion. I guess the one question I would ask of, of us around the table, this is not engraved in stone, it doesn't hold future councils to what we may decide this year, that if we want to go with the procedure this year, that maybe next year, the council today could determine their own direction? If the motion could reflect at least that in the conversation, I'd, I'd appreciate it.
What's that? Oh, okay, just a decision for this year, you mean? Oh, I see what you're saying, okay. Okay. Yeah. Yeah, okay. Good, something different?
Yeah, no, thank you, your worship. This, this meeting of the, of the grants organizations was brought up at the, I think, the last council before this one, and I think at the very first of it, if I'm not wrong, Counselor Mooney, that brought up one of the councils that we, we have in session meetings and listen to the people that wanted to present at, at a council meeting on a Saturday. So, this is not a old thing that we've done for years and years, and, well, we've only done it for the last probably seven years, or longer than that. CAO shaking his head. It's been longer than that? Longer than you've been here? Okay. And another thing is that Counselor Dawes, are you gonna be here on, on the 23rd to hear the presentations for the people that come, come forward on that day, if, if we so, so have that, that day to listen to people present?
Absolutely.
Yes, yes, she said yes. Okay, so, is there anything you're gonna add?
They're just to respond for the years, and I'm just looking at my colleague, Counselor, Counsel, Deputy Mayor McLeod, but I vaguely remember back in the 80s we were doing this. It went way back. It's, it's, it's a very old ritual.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is, okay, to discontinue, and Linda, you'll have to make all the calls, or? Okay, good. All right. Okay, the, the motion is that we are going to not do this. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Oh, one, one nay. MPS, now you be review statements of interest workshop date. CAO?
I'm gonna let Caroline talk, but the purpose, the purpose here is, is to seek a, a date for a one-hour workshop of council.
Go ahead, Caroline.
So, if council will remember, I think it was about a month ago, Morris and Jeff were here, and they talked about this idea of community statements of interest for different neighborhoods within the town. So, it's becoming time for them to move forward with that concept, and they really need council to sit down and finalize their, their visions for different neighborhoods within the community. So, I'm just looking to get an hour of your time, it's with me, to sit down and go over what they've prepared, and make sure that that fits with your thinking for the town.
So, you're looking just to set up a date?
Is that individually?
Yes.
Is that individually, collectively?
Yeah. Okay, so, so the motion would be to direct staff to set up a date for this, and, who wants to make that? Okay? Second? Go ahead, you good? Okay? All right, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you, Caroline. Recommendations from joint council meeting? So, we have four. That the Yarmouth International Airport runway retrofit be the number one regional infrastructure priority, and that this be recommended to the respective councils for approval. So, we are looking to approve the airport runway retrofit as number one. Moved and seconded? Any discussion?
Questions?
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Second one is that the track and field project be removed from the list and referred to the three councils for implementation as a joint council project. So, that is coming to us. No? This is just that we agree to remove it from the list. Okay? So, moved, seconded? Any discussion? Go ahead.
No, no. Information, worship, I think the intent, if I can be corrected, was that we removed it from the list with the intent that the three councils would work towards an implementation of the project, that we jointly work together.
Yes, that's true, but right here, we're just agreeing to do that.
Yes, that's all we're doing, just agreeing to...
And Argyle will send us further information.
That's right. We're gonna work with them to the, but we're not making a financial commitment at this time, but we're gonna work jointly with them.
Yes, yes, this is just to agree to do that. Okay, so moved and seconded? Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Third one, that the Ferry Terminal new construction be the number two regional infrastructure priority? Moved, seconded? Any discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. And fourth, that Mariners Center expansion be the number three regional infrastructure priority? Moved and seconded? Any discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Student safety at Central School, timely because of last night? Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, your worship. I have, like to make a motion, I got my notes here, and I'm, too many things happening in there. I'd like to make a motion that the traffic authority be asked to investigate the impact on traffic flows around Yarmouth Central School. Now, I'm changing that motion now, that the tri-county regional school board has opted to close So-Centennial School and move those students to Central School.
Seconded.
Your worship, there has been some concern by the, by the parent groups at Central School, by the administration... the administration, and by the community as to the traffic flows in Central. Central School is located in such a way that the town has made Collin Street a one-way street, however, in, at the dismissal times and at opening times of the, it's a very congested situation. And I'd like to, the intent is, is the traffic authority just to review it. Mr. Purdy, the vice principal, and I circulated this around to council, identified five concerns that he'd like us to look at, is number one, that the staff at the school use only the parking at the Yarmouth, former Yarmouth High and Parade, and there's a concern with that of what will be happening during the construction phase of the new school. You know, how is that gonna be possible, and will there be alternative parking? All class trips are gonna use the parking lot. The big concern of handicap parking is a concern they have. Parking violations on Collin Street, he's asking that we have to tighten up that because it is literally a traffic jam there at dismissal. And also, there's questions about the new teacher center there, because the teacher center before was more seasonal, but now what's happening is they've moved offices into that building, which means there is even more traffic in the area. So they've also moved, I think the Early Childhood Learning Center is now in there. They've added the virtual classroom staff in there. So they've put a fair amount of staff in the building, which has caused some concern. So the motion is just to have our authority look at it, maybe meet with the school board, find out exactly what their needs are, and how we can make a good, smooth flow around the area.
Good, okay. So it was moved and seconded? Any more discussion?
Question.
Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Cleanup sawmill property? Go ahead.
Yes, your worship, this is your probably most favorite topic this week, I suspect.
It's kept me busy.
Yeah, definitely. Kept us all busy. Your worship, I'd like to make a motion that staff be directed to advise council in a timely fashion on suggested options for the cleanups of plastics and assorted debris resulting from the spreading of compost overs, or Class B compost, on the town-owned former sawmill property in Lake George. That is my motion.
Moved and seconded?
Your worship, we all know the story, we're not gonna get into it. There were some problems, I guess, that occurred, and I'm not sure the details on how Class B compost ended up on our property. I do know it was done. There is a concern now to fix it up. I mean, there's no question. We have worked long and hard. The water utility, which we're all on the board, has made excellent strides in the last number of years with the residents of Lake George. I often refer to them as stewards of our watershed. They have actually served as almost like a mini police force up there, and I'm very proud and grateful of all of them that have contributed so much to keeping our watershed safe. I cannot reiterate enough that there's no danger to the water quality with what happened there, simply because it's an organic compost. It was finished compost. It was not second-class, it's not full of issues. It was tested before it was put there, we were told by staff. And it's 500 meters from the waterway itself, the requirement that we have, and I can be corrected from the CIO, is 350 meters, I believe, for fertilizer in that area. And the acceptable, looking at standards, is about 100 meters. So we are good there, plus it's on the upper part of the lake, so it's not a danger to the intake. However, there is, the issue does remain that we have a lot of plastics, and we have a lot of materials there that are unsightly, there's no question. Your worship, I know you've toured the area, you've seen it. Part of the problem, unfortunately, is people are not careful with what they're putting in their compost. I mean, that is the whole concern, and we've had discussions with our CIO about the possibility of maybe Waste Check doing a little bit better on the briefing of people, or letting people know the do's and the don'ts. The biggest problem we're facing is those alleged recycled plastic bags that are not really recyclable. I mean, yes, they'll break down in 20 or 30 years, but in our cooking process for compost, they, some of them do not break down for five or six years. Some of them do break down quickly. There are some products that are very efficient, but others are not. And unfortunately, we have a lot of plastic in the area from that. So the intent of the motion is let staff come back to us to let the residents know that we're on this very quickly, and mistakes have been made, and I think we just have to clean it up.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, your worship. And a couple of questions is, how did this happen, right? And I think after one or two loads of bringing this stuff out there in Lake George, and you saw what ended up on the ground, you'd have to ask the question, what happened, right? And the next thing is, we might have lost a little credibility in the issue here around this table or at staff level. I don't know if they, the residents, either in town or out in Lake George, trust what anybody has to say after what happened out in Lake George. I would like to see a community meeting in Lake George Fire Department and have all related entities from Environment, Department of Public Health, and Natural Resources, and maybe even a hydrologist out there to alleviate the fears of everything is true, what Counselor Langill said, and what's been said over the last couple of days in the media. I think we owe it to the stewards of the watershed, excuse me, we owe it to the stewards of the watershed. You know, we're gonna have to do the next step, we're gonna have to rebuild the trust out there again. I took a tour along with Counselor Dennis and Counselor McIsaac and Counselor Langill the other day, it was disgusting. I wouldn't want that in my back park, you know, where I live on Brunson Street Extension. I know anybody in this, around this table wouldn't want it next to them, and I can't blame the residents for being a little PO'd, right? I could use a stronger word than that, but maybe to the CIO, I think what we, I think what they deserve, what our citizens here in the town of Yarmouth deserve, and what the citizens in Lake George deserve, is a detailed, written-out, point-by-point plan on what we're gonna do out there. How we're gonna clean it up, what the other entities say, because I'd like to see what Environment has to say on this. You know, I trust what you say 100 percent, Counselor Langill, and you said what that is, and I believe you, but I think we have to have other entities involved, and I think they have to come in at either at the provincial or the federal level through Environment, and I think we owe it to the people out there. And I'd like to, you know, we're gonna handle this like in a professional manner, right? So let's get the professionals in there. I know that we want to clean it up. I know this is a tough time of year to do it when the ground is frozen. I can't imagine the percolation and the smell out there in the summertime, what it was, and I know we have one of the residents that live right next to, right next to the, right next to the property where the old mill was, but I think we're gonna have to take some extra steps above and beyond, right? And I don't want to assign blame to this, I don't want to assign blame to this to anybody, but I want to know how this happened, so we can resolve the issue, so it won't happen again. And that's just my comments, but I'll support the motion, and I think we're gonna have to go an extra step farther, because Counselor Langill, you grew up in that area, you know the people well, right, and you have the confidence of myself, as you as a water utility person, and I'd just be.
I don't know how that happened.
I'd just like to be interested, see what the CIO could do in.
Too many lights on.
Too many lights. I think I'm good. I'd just like to know what we could do at staff level to alleviate those fears, to do a chronological order in what we're gonna do to alleviate the problem, and to make sure that there's safety is the number one priority, because you can see what happens to water systems right across, right across the country. You can see what happened in Michigan, right? And when government gets involved, bad things can happen, so let's get this problem fixed.
So anybody else want to speak to this motion? You're on, Counselor Dennis.
I totally agree with you, Counselor Mooney, but we have people in the audience right now, and normally, when we have a council meeting, if there's somebody who wants to say something, we usually ask them if they can. So is that okay?
Well, if they want to speak, they ask to speak.
Okay.
That was funny. Yeah, by all means. You just have to come up and tell us your name and.
I'm Adam Russell. I am the direct resident to your property, and been protecting it like my own since I lived there. I've been your neighbor, and this is how I get repaid. Like, I brought this to the attention. I called Environment. And you know what I got back? Not a phone call. I hear a lot of people saying that I've been talked to, but I've been talked to on my basis, picking up a daughter, you know, it's not you picking up the phone calling me directly. Taking the effort. You never said you called me, but I'm just saying.
No, no, I just didn't, I just wanted to ask you, were you saying you tried to contact Environment, or you?
No, I contacted the town, I talked to Jeff personally. I talked to Jeff. I mean, I go, lo and behold, I got to talk to a secretary of the secretary of the secretary to get to Jeff anyway, so I might as well go to Jeff. So anyway, we had our discussion, our last discussion, you know, we talked in the kitchen. I asked you, well, who was at fault, you know, and you told me, well, I had this guy, he was supposed to call you, he's no longer with us anymore. But we're gonna address this, we're gonna come out this, next week, and we're gonna go have a walk-around, which never, ever happened. I'm still waiting for that walk-around, it never come. So I'm just really concerned that it's all right to take this kind of garbage, dump it in somebody's backyard, and have kids there that have to play in the direct area of this garbage. And say that it's safe? Well, I was taught stuff runs downhill, and water don't get to the lake unless it runs down that hill. I'm getting emotional, because it's a safety hazard, not just for humans, animals too. There was ducks, deer, geese, everything. And we turn around and we just destroy a piece of property. It had 10 years of growth, and you can say it's undesirable, what are you gonna do with it? Are you gonna plan on logging it down the road? What do you, like, really, what are you gonna do to that property that 10 years of growth didn't already do? Mother Nature will take care of herself, and if you planned on doing that, why did you strip the soil that was on there and sell it? Haul it out of there? The tailing piles are still there, you didn't haul that away, you left the garbage behind. Great big mountains of stumps, rocks, whatever else come out of that soil, you left it, but now you're looking at planting trees? You destroyed five acres of land with garbage and planted 50 trees? It's unacceptable. So if you guys believe that it's safe, well, come out here and have a glass of my water and tell me it's safe. Come bring some of the stuff home, plant your flowers in it, tell me it's safe. Hey, you gotta build a new school, why don't you take that stuff, go put it in the field and let the kids play in it? You know? I just think it's crazy to actually sit there, and it's not a joke, there's nothing to laugh about. I heard Mr. Langill's thing on CBC this evening. It's nothing to smile and kid around about, it's a serious issue. And for somebody to sit there and take it like, yeah, it's no big deal, it's safe, we give it to the farmers, well, guess what? I wouldn't eat anything those farmers planted, so tell me who farmers you're giving it to, so I can put them on my list. If you wouldn't put it in your own yard, don't put it in my backyard. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, worship. Yeah, I'm sorry again, Mr. Adams, I don't, I take it very seriously, and I don't know where you get the idea that I'm taking it in a joking matter. I'm really, I mean, I went up there on Saturday, I was totally disgusted. I was there with Mr. Horton, I don't think I laughed, I don't think I made fun of it, and I don't think I, so I don't know where you're coming from, saying that I'm.
It's your posture and the way you carry yourself, and you know, everything seems like it's a joke, but it's not a joke.
It's not a joke, sir, and I assure you it's not a joke. I mean.
And if you were that sincere, how come you never called?
Because.
I keep hearing that everybody's sincere, but yet not a phone call to my house, and say, you know, I was out there, I looked over the property, we're gonna do something about it. No, just let me read the papers, or have to go to the media, and then everybody wants to talk to you, right?
Well, I think first of all, the first, I had knowledge, and I can safely say for Counselor Dennis, Mooney, and McIsaac, was on Saturday when I visited your, when I visited the property.
Right.
We had no knowledge prior to that, that it even had occurred, nothing about it, zip, zero, zip. We knew nothing about it, for starters. Now, just give me a chance, sir. Then on Monday, then on Sunday, and my colleagues around this table will, I think, agree with me, I sent an email to the CIO saying, what on earth has happened here? Like, what is going on? On Monday, I'm at a meeting here, and the first thing we did was discuss this issue right off the bat, like, what is happening, and staff was immediately looking into it. So we've been taking it very, very, very seriously. There's no question, I mean, I picked up stuff on that site that was unbelievable, there's no question. So my concern is, is I do not want people to fear that the water they're drinking, our customers in the water utility, have been polluted, because that seems to be the message that people want them to hear, that we have polluted the Lake George water supply, and that has not happened. That is an organic compost that is no different than any other compost that is produced. It was cooked, cured, tested compost, and if you want to, we'll show you the records. Now, the water, yes, definitely runs downhill, but water also purifies in the soil before it hits the water within a 100-meter diameter. I mean, that's basically the general cleansing process.
Takes out bacteria and stuff like that.
It's a filtration process that happens.
I understand.
That is in the upper part of the lake, it's a long distance from the intake, and once it hits the intake, it goes through a complete purification system, so it's well looked after, I mean, in that case. So the water quality has not been impaired in any way, and we've been assured that through testing. The concern that we have is the garbage that's on the site, and that is the big why, and I said that on CBC today, if you heard the interview, why we used Class B or these overage compost stuff is beyond me. And I was, I visited the Sala Waste Park, Counselor Mooney and I sat on that board together. We have gotten mountains of Class A compost that could have been easily put on that site. And I'm as annoyed as you are on why we did what we did, and I don't know the answer. And Counselor Mooney just said it a few minutes ago, we gotta find out what happened there, that this doesn't happen again. The sad thing was, the intent of this project was to actually make that piece of property look good, was to get rid of the, get rid of the alders, we were gonna put compost in it, we were gonna seed it, we were gonna put trees there, it was gonna be a really nice area, and look what happened. But you did say something that really hit me. Did you say we took the topsoil off of that property?
Exactly.
You actually saw trucks removed?
I seen the screener, I seen the trucks, I seen it all, it was all cleaned off after you guys bought the property.
Oh, that was after we bought the property, that would be like 10, 15 years ago?
Well, 10 years ago, 10 years ago.
Okay, that's, yeah, okay.
You guys totally stripped the property.
So that wasn't recent, okay? So somebody came in and stripped the property, the top of it, 10, when we bought it? So I knew nothing of that, because I wasn't around the table at that point, I was there before that. But I do want to assure you that we're looking at it very, I mean, from my point of view, I'm like a dog with a bone. I'm really concerned about that piece of, it's a mess. Counselor Mooney hit the nail on the head, it is a mess, there is no, and it's gonna get worse, because as that compost leaches into the soil, which it should do, that was the intent, to make the soil rich, all that stuff is gonna be on top.
Well, it's not just gonna be on top, it's buried, it's covered, it's spread, it's, I mean, you used a menor spreader to spread it out there and bury it.
Yeah.
I mean, truckloads upon truckloads upon truckloads for over a week and a half, almost two weeks, you've got, seven days a week, or six days a week, whatever they were running, and just constant, in and out, from 7:00 in the morning until 7:00 at night, so.
And you see, the irony is, is I lived in that area, I brought up in that area, I never knew a thing about it, nobody said a word about it, I mean.
But how, I just, I can't fathom that, considering we're sitting here, listening to a council meeting where you can't give a piece of property away for a dollar, but you can spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on trucking, and nobody has a damn clue where the money's going.
That's a very good question, and very good statement, and that's.
No, wait a sec, wait a second. Maybe, maybe the answer to that is that the compost was gonna be laid, right? We just didn't know that it was Class B. Is that what you're asking?
No, I'm saying there's a lot of money being spent for nobody to know that there's a project like that going on.
Yeah.
I mean, just trucking alone, I wouldn't want to build. No, there were all three different companies' trucks hauling for weeks.
I don't either.
When was that placed?
That would have been in September. So I just don't, I can't fathom that, I don't think anybody else can fathom that, that somebody here didn't know that that was actually going on. So.
I didn't even know what's happened.
Yeah, okay.
I wasn't, I wasn't, I wasn't in part of the presentation, I knew nothing until after.
Councillor Mooney?
Uh, I'm gonna make a motion after we pass this one, Your Worship, but, um-
Yeah, okay, let us pass.
Yeah, uh-
Yeah, I'm aware of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Garnet Horton, I'm a resident of the town of Yarmouth. Yeah, you can speak up a little louder. How loud do you want me to talk, councillor? Well, nice to see you back, Your Worship. First thing I'd like to say is, I'd like to thank the four councillors that did come out on Saturday in their own time, to go out there and, and have a look around on our watershed there. And the other thing I'd like to say, there's three people that live in the vicinity that have wells that are a hundred meters from, uh, this dump that you've made. So what about them? And what if the water does make it down there? Because we're just, Mr. Landjel's just talking about, councillor Landjel's just talking about the soil. And that's okay, and you say you've got qualifications or the, the paperwork to back it up. But what about all those plastics and knives and spoons and condoms and needles and whatever else we saw when we were out there? Because classification of compost, there's AA, A, and B, and I'm sure councillor Landjel will agree with me on that, and AA and A you can spread on your, your ground, but this B stuff now is something else. And where was the inspection when it was leaving the facility to go there? I wanna know if you had an HSE plan, if you had safety meetings with the trucking companies and everything, what they were hauling? What they were taking there, because all you're allowed to put on, uh, the thing, it says, uh, is two millimeters to three millimeters, that's like that. Those forks that I took out of my drawer to measure tonight are four and a half inches. And there was a lot of them there, especially down on the other end of it, that they send somebody else out there to already pick up. It's not just four or five inches spread over that ground, in some places, it's three or four feet, feet thick. Now, you tell me you're gonna send somebody out there, a bunch of team of men or people, just to pick up those little bits of plastic and you're gonna get it? No, you need to take all that soil out of there and send it to Queen's County where it's supposed to be sent, and not in somebody's backyard. You know, the regulations state it right here, and it says it can prove that, you know, it can, cancer causing and prove in birth defects. That's over time, plastic doesn't, doesn't break down overnight. It takes fifteen, twenty, whatever years it is, I'll be dead and gone, my grandson's kids might be still living in this town. You know, like, come on. Somebody's really gotta divvy up here, council. You know, where did this decision come from, I'm sure? And I'm gonna ask you a question, Adam. When you asked the CIO that question, whose fault was that? Did, did you not tell me, and I don't wanna put words in your mouth, did you not tell me that that was an employee for the town that doesn't work for the town of Yarmouth anymore?
He told me that the guy that works for them, that was working on it, so I didn't think it was a Tom.
Thank you very much, I wanna, I wanna make sure I get this in here.
If I can clarify, Your Worship, I'd like to comment on that.
Sure.
The person who I'd asked to contact, Mr. Russell, was the employee he's referring to, but he is not the employee who was responsible for the project. Okay, just to clarify.
Okay. And I'd like to know how much the bill, how many thousands of dollars it was to, to, to truck this stuff from, uh, the landfill over there? What do you think the bill's gonna be to clean this up properly? And how much do you think it's gonna take to clean it up? You know? To put this back, that people in town, or people out there, don't have to worry about their health and safety, or their kids getting poisoned in the future? Nobody talked to Adam about it, I, I've spent a lot of time talking to him, and, over the, since Saturday, my phone's been ringing off the wall, half-assed, uh, going crazy, I think, in some ways, and Jeff, I'm sorry that, uh, you're not feeling good tonight, but this is far from over. And it can only come from the top, Your Worship. Can only come from the top. You were out there, an employee told you, when you were out there for the Toronto Dominion Bank, and you were planting trees, that this was a real mess, I was told. And it's only coming to light now? When was that? End of September? When was that? And look at what time it is now, and what it took to get it to council that we can face up to it. Okay, I can't thank these councillors enough for come, taking their time on Saturday to come out. And, Your Worship, I wouldn't blindside you, if you weren't in Toronto at the time, I would have had you there too.
Well, of course.
And, and, and I'm, I'm sorry about that, but there's nothing I can do about the timing of it. I don't know. If these are the decisions that get made, that council isn't informed of it, and when it was found out, why wasn't there an emergency meeting called, and council brought in and told about it? So we, you could address the situation and know where you are, instead of coming to a council meeting three months later? And here we are, and we're just at the start of this, this is far from over. The only way that this will be over is when you take every piece of dirt, every piece of garbage that you put there, out of there, and put these people's minds at rest. And everybody else in the town of Yarmouth, I don't wanna hear that this isn't gonna make it down to the watershed, you can't tell me that. I work offshore, and when we spill something in the water, we really gotta account for it. I mean, Ottawa comes in, Department of Environment comes in, the reports start to roll out, heads will roll, people will get fired, you can't throw a, a matchstick o- over the side of an oil rig, if you're caught, you're terminated. I don't know. I'm gonna leave it at that for now, 'cause I'm kinda like Adam, I'm getting emotional too, but- We will have another chance, at this, this is far from over. So let's see you guys come and give your A-game, and, and come up with some, uh, constructive stuff, what you're gonna do. And thank you very much for councillor Mooney for that statement, because I think everybody ought to be involved in this, and nobody sitting in this room can honestly say that there isn't any, anything gonna happen out on, on that land, with what I've seen on that land, and I think you councillors have seen it, it's all over, you can get videos and pictures off Facebook and everything else now on it, and it's far from done. And I really feel sorry for Adam and the people that have gotta live there, and I've went and talked to them, and they're here, if anybody else wants to get up and talk about it. Feel free, thank you very much for your time, Your Worship.
Thank you, Garnet.
Good evening. For those who don't know me, my name is Doris Powell. I own a farm about a quarter mile from the dump site, or the reclamation site, or whatever you wanna call it. It ain't pretty, that's for sure. About a year ago, I listened to a Weekender, and, uh, it was actually Ken Langiel saying that the town was going into the water business. Well, uh, I think you need to get out of the business, 'cause you don't know what the hell you're doing. Okay? What I saw, and what I saw, and you haven't seen all of what I saw, 'cause I have fifteen more videos, was terrifying. I won't drink the water in my house, now, and I live in town, I won't drink the water. And I, I am just, I haven't been able to sleep. I don't think people realize what is there, and I'm not just talking about what just got dumped, I'm talking about what was there before, these, uh, these wells, and, um, the chemicals that are used in these, uh, the chemicals that are used in these, um, wood processing plants that was there before, I found some Google images of, um, that when it was a woodmill, it was very large and did quite a bit of business. And, um, from what I've been told, those wells haven't really been monitored. I saw water going towards the lake from where the well area is, I happen to know that, now I know, that, uh, there was a, uh, tank that was full of, um, chemicals that are, have to do with processing wood, uh, that had leaked. So, um, I, I don't know what to say, other than, uh, you guys need to run the town and stop running all these other businesses, because it's not working, and I, I don't even, I can't even describe what I saw that day I was there. Adam's a good friend of mine, um, I've known him since I first moved here. I didn't know about this till I, I heard it on, or saw it on Facebook, and I just was beside myself, I, I, I'm just, um, I, I think Mooney's really, Phil summed it up. We've lost faith. Uh, I won't drink the water, you know, they used to joke when I first came here, they called it the town brown, well, now it really is. So you guys need to do something about it. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Your Worship, uh, thank you, Mrs. Powell, for your comment, um, and again, um, just to respond, this piece of property is outside of the watershed area, it is not in the watershed. That is correct, and you can, and we've had hydrologists do hydrologist studies, because last year, um, Mrs. Powell, or two years ago, if you may remember, we were concerned about, uh, the mink ranches in the area. And this council actually hired a hydrologist to actually show us the flow of water into Lake George, how the water flows, and will there be any danger from any mink ranches that may be in the area, so, there is a scientific study, a scientific basis, and that is available, I believe it's online, uh, that'll show you exactly what's going on with the flow of water. Our water at the water treatment plant is tested daily. It is the second best water in Nova Scotia, it still is. This incident happened in September of two thousand and fifteen. At our water treatment plant, when that water leaves that plant, that, that water is tested daily, if not three or four times daily by our technicians, to make sure it's of proper quality. Environment, Nova Scotia Department of Environment insists on those tests. It is part of the business of doing water. Now, Mrs. Powell, if you would like to, I will gladly show you all of those test results, and we would make them available to you, Mrs. Powell, that you can see them, to give you assurance that there is no change to that water quality. Sure, sure, sure. I mean, that's not an issue, but my point is, for you to say that this has destroyed your faith in the water of, of Yarmouth, I, I think is a, a bit alarmist, as far as I'm concerned, is very much alarmist, because in reality, it has not made any effect, at the bottom line is at our treatment plant, is when our water goes out to our customers, we look at quality of the water. We have to do that, that is part of the regulations for us to stay in business, water is very strictly monitored by the Utilities and Review Board, it's got to be done that way, so- We didn't ch- Well, I, I think though, Mrs. Powell, to be perfectly honest, you're talking two thousand and five, Mr. Russell was talking two thousand and ten, fifteen years ago, we weren't around the table two thousand, back then, previous councils, and I'm not passing the blame on anyone from what happened back to that mill. You mentioned tanks tonight, first I've heard of it, and I know our CIO has noted that, and that's one thing we will definitely check into. The information we were given is that when the sawmill property was acquired, we did, we removed all the buildings, all the structures, sealed all of the ponds, we removed anything that was hazardous to the water utility. That was the reason we bought that piece of property. The concern that the town had at the time, because that property has a fair chunk of land bordering the lake. Our concern was that somebody was going to buy that mill, and was going to start business there as a mill. And we did not want that to happen, because we did not want to endanger that lake in any way, and-
Yeah, we, we need-
Let me just finish, Mrs. Powell, there, there, there is things happening up there that we are not involved, that we don't know, I mean, we've, as council, found out about this on Saturday last, less than six days ago. We did not know, our investig, we're doing an investigation, our CIO is investigating to see exactly what happened, we will be giving a full report on what's going on, but, the bottom line is, the motion before this council right now is to, A, come back with options to clean up the mess, appreciate your comments, appreciate Mr. Russell's, Mr., uh, Mr. Adams' comment, we, we're very, we're very concerned about that. Secondly, we are checking the water quality, we check it every day, it's not, you're safe, I'm drinking town water right now. I haven't dropped dead yet, I'm sorry, you know, I may, some may wanna see that, but I think most of us around the room are at this point, so, uh, and I'm not worried about it. But on the other hand, we need a chance to help, we, a mistake has been made, and I said from the get-go, why Class B compost ended up out there is beyond, nobody knows. And I'll be honest with you, I don't even think it was near Class B, this is one thing, you'll have a chance to come back up. We do, we do. We do, we do. We're certified, we, that's all done, I mean, that's part of the routine of, of doing business for water, I mean, we, we just do not go up and do our own water samples, no. All of our testing is done, I believe, correct me, CIO, at the Yarmouth Regional Hospital. The Yarmouth Regional Hospital lab tests our water, I know, I sign the checks every month for thousands of dollars. So if you've got any faith in that water sample, then I would, and if you're worried about water quality, I would suggest you find a new hospital to go to, because obviously their lab is not capable of doing the qualified tests that are within your comfort zone, because they're the ones doing the tests. We take the bottled water to them in sealed containers that we take from the facility, and that's, that's who does our testing. So I assure you, unless you're not trusting the Yarmouth Hospital, there's not much more I can do, thank you.
Okay, ma'am. Just, just tell us your name and-
My name is Beth Evans, I'm from Lake George, my property borders your property, it's downhill from your property. I do not have the luxury of having my water tested and treated, because I have a well. Now you tell me, it seems to me that you people are more concerned about the town's water, which is approximately a kilometer from where this dump site has been put. Where mine is a heck of a lot closer. I have two small children. Believe it or not, I'm sixty years old, I have a three and a half year old, and I have a six and a half year old. These children are drinking the same water I'm drinking, which comes out of my well. I think maybe you should be looking at our well water besides your town water, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Your Worship, uh, we did discuss this, I believe Jeff and Mayor and I discussed this on Monday. And I think the intent is, is that if anybody's well up there needs to be tested, I think we'd be more than willing to cooperate with residents on that, I mean, just a matter of letting us know what's going on, I think we would have no difficulty, but that, I'll try to direct, defer to the CIO on that one.
You can have a seat, and we'll just be right with you.
Mayor, council?
Absolutely, um, you know, we, that, 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 that's an easy part of this to deal with, is well testing, so, um, you know, we will, we will come and we will test your well, or assist you in testing your well, and, uh, if there are any issues, then we'll deal with that.
My name's Bob Gray from Lake George, I live just across the road from your site, whatever you wanna call it, um. Out of that, I grew up, I used to be on my father's land, where that mill was, okay, so I know the land very well. There's four brooks that run off of that piece of property, okay? Two run out of the north end of that, where that site is, there's a black spruce swamp in there. And one runs towards Lake George, one runs towards, crosses my property. The other one runs from the north end of it, some of it goes towards Lake George, and the rest of it comes across on the north side of my property. And, uh, they're both fairly good sized brooks. The brook that runs on the north side of my property runs approximately twenty-five feet from my well, huh, and into a pond behind my house. Um, definitely concerned, we have small children, as well as Beth back there, and, uh, it's a mess in there. I mean, I own quite a bit of property out there, and I like it out there, I wanna stay out there, and, uh, come on, guys, it's a mess out there. And, uh, I think Mayor, or, not Mayor Mooney. Councillor Mooney over here had a good idea about, uh, there, there's other people that would like to be here tonight, but there's functions going on in our community, there's a bingo, et cetera, et cetera, going on. And, uh, I'm sure we could arrange a meeting at our lakes and districts, that way maybe we can get everybody to air it, and, and give everybody some time to prepare, 'cause we'd like to prepare as well, right?
Certainly.
I'd like to have that, that brook tested, and, and I'm gonna get some independent tests done myself. Because, uh, it runs right up, right across that, well, you see the brook in the films, you've all seen the films, I'm sure, right? Well, that brook's the one that runs across my property right by my well, huh, and, I don't like, what I see out there, I don't, wouldn't want in my well, I'll put it to you that way, now, I'm sure none of you would as well, and it just, we're all upset, and you have to understand our, our concern, right?
And we do. We, we very much do.
And, uh, so anyways, we're here tonight to speak our case, I guess.
Go ahead.
Pardon?
I'm beginning to.
Yeah.
I was not invited, my phone did not ring off the call, uh, I was not aware of any of this.
You don't have a light on. You need your light on. Need your light on.
I learned about this Tuesday of this week.
Wow.
I had no idea this took place in my backyard. I was told last summer that they were bringing a loom in to just make it a nice park-like kinda thing up in back there. I had no idea that they were bringing in four hundred tandem loads of Class B stuff, and then covering- covered up with a little bit of alum. I had no idea that that was taking place, huh? Or I'd have been standing in front of one of the trucks, probably.
Your worship, further to that meeting, and just, we met with, or I met with municipal council on Wednesday with regard to the new regulations we're looking at, to tighten up safety on Lake George. And part of that process is a public consultation that's going to be happening in Lake George with the residents. At that meeting, I would suggest we will probably have representatives from Environment, and we'll have the key players there. So my suggestion is to kind of piggyback both at the same time, so that everybody, what we are looking at is to make some changes to the regulations of the lake, some concerns about open fires, boating on the lake, that sort of thing. Will not affect the residents, not the residents of the area, they're protected, but people coming in from the outside. And we're going to be doing that anyway within the next three weeks, next three weeks to a month's time, to get all the players together. So if you think that would be a good time, we can combine them both, because they both all affect the quality of water in the lake. Or you think a separate meeting would be better?
Pardon?
Or do you think a separate meeting would be better?
I don't know, we'd have to-
I'm not, I'm not concerned-
No, we're not concerned about the boating and all that. We're concerned about this mess, right? Let's have a meeting about this mess.
Okay.
I mean, everybody you talk to on this issue, everybody says, "I don't know. I don't know."
Nobody knows.
Nobody knows. How come nobody knows? Somebody knows. Come on.
And that's what we're trying to find out.
I deal in the fish every day. I have to answer to CFIA, et cetera, et cetera. When I make a boo-boo, I'm held responsible.
Yeah. And this is what we're trying to find out. I think the important thing is, and you mentioned tests, and I don't know, your worship, but something we should look at, if any of the residents out there that are directly affected in any way by what has happened, they should not have any costs incurred for testing, et cetera. That should be worked, in my opinion, through the town. We should be looking after reimbursing any costs. If you're going to hire an indep-, we will do our tests, but if you wish to hire an independent person, I'm hoping, I don't know what my colleagues feel, but really I-
I don't think anyone's going to argue with that.
Nobody's going to argue. I think as far as I'm concerned, we should, we caused this, there's no question. It was our fault. It's our fault, it's happened, there's no question. We've got to take responsibility, you can't duck it. We don't know who to point the finger to, it's irrelevant, it's done. Truckloads of Class B compost is on a piece of property, there's issues going on, you are concerned of right, as you should be. If I was a property owner, I'd be hopping mad at this property.
And we are. Somebody knows exactly how much of this stuff was brought there.
Yeah.
Somebody knows that, like a Class B only has size of a matchhead pieces in it, huh? The first scoop that went on the truck, somebody knew. Somebody knew. Right?
Yeah. So I mean, that's a-
I mean, there's stuff out there that ain't fit, trust me.
But you know, in fairness, though, interestingly enough, when I visited the site, and I know Counselor Dennis and Mackay's were, there were some huge objects out there.
There is, yeah.
I mean, some huge stuff. There's no way that that could have got into a Class B situation. It was almost as if there was like a small mini dump in the area that might have got disturbed, or might have been something that may have been left over from the sawmill that we weren't aware of. I don't know. But there was some huge pieces of material, like a piece of a muffler, there's no way that's going to go through the screening process.
That's right.
You know?
But it did somehow. Same as all them plastic bags, the, I could go on a list of the stuff that's there, but I'm not going to, I mean, you've all heard the story 15 times, right? It's a boo-boo, and someone's responsible.
Yeah.
And I'd like to test both of my brooks as well. I have trout ponds there, which there's no trout in as of today. You know, we got daughters, our kids play in the backyard, play in the pool, catch a frog, she loves it, right? It's a mess.
Get your answers.
All right. Thank you.
And my concern is, get the testing done for the brook, and any other concerns with the wells, get those done ASAP, and make arrangements for that. So just one other thing that we have to do, and do we need a motion, I think, afterwards, Jeff, for the public meeting?
Sure.
Okay, I'll do that after we do this one.
Counselor Dennis?
Yes, thank you, your worship. I'm all for testing and testing people's wells, but the soil and everything has just been put there, so it's the future. It's next year, the year after, 10 years from now, what these plastics and everything have leached into the soil. And plastics have, I can't say the word, tolerates or whatever, but they are cancer-causing, and they cause birth defects. And so it's the long term that we have to look at for our children, our grandchildren. So testing this year may not show anything, but what's going to happen if five years down the road, there's something wrong with their wells? Are we going to stand up and look after them then?
That's why we're cleaning the mess now.
Thank you.
Mr. Powell? Oh, go ahead.
Question. To the gentleman, gentleman was just up here. Did you say you own property across the road?
Yes.
From the place, and the property that the stuff is on, the luminate is on there?
Exactly across there.
Did you say your grandfather, father owned that property? Your father owned that property? He had the sawmill and that there?
No, my father didn't have sawmill.
Okay. Okay, okay. So the ponds and everything were still, before the infill went there, the ponds, the runoff was still running off into your ponds and whatever, is that correct? Is that correct in saying that?
Yeah.
So even if this stuff was there, even if it was put there in September, before September, the runoffs were still running off into your pond and wherever it was running off?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's what I wanted to get in my head there. So what's there now, you're concerned what was put there, not what was, without the activities that were there before, with the sawmill and everything?
Well, we didn't test it before.
Before?
I mean, I have fish, so.
Okay, great, great. So since September, you're saying you don't have any fish since this past September, or?
They're gone.
They're gone? Yeah, okay.
What was the color of that?
Oh, okay. So that's what I wanted to get clear. But I just wanted to make sure that, that I knew that you're, the runoffs were already there before this stuff went there. And the runoffs that's running off now are still running off regardless of this stuff was there or not?
There's always the two brooks.
With these, yeah, with these two brooks.
Two brooks.
Yeah. Yeah, because I wasn't aware there was two brooks. Like, this just came to light on last Saturday through Mr. Horton, that brought us up on a tour and showed us what was happening.
We know that.
Would you like to see the brooks?
Yeah. Okay, that's great. That's great.
I know where they are.
Yeah, great, great. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good. Go ahead, Mr. Powell.
Hi, this is Robert Powell. I'm the husband of Doris Powell spoke earlier. I think this is a case study in how good intentions pave the road straight to hell. That being said, the incredible amount of debris that was planted there in excess of what would normally be a topsoil reclamation effort calls into question what was really going on. There's basically one foot plus of this material. Normally, it would be six inches, eight inches, or something much less than that, to get your seeding characteristics. Not to mention that it was put in in September, beyond the growth season, to seed, and thereby mitigate the erosion aspects of this project. I was the one who filmed, by the way. It's rivulets everywhere. It's basically an erosion catastrophe. There was a holding pond that shows up in Google Earth on 2005 for the old mill. That area is completely filled, I'm guessing probably four feet of this material, and now it's running off towards, just spoke, his property. That's the stream running down and northward towards his well, and the woman, the elderly woman that just spoke, sorry. So there's just a number of issues here. So we have an erosion issue, wasn't mitigated for erosion. We have people saying that trees were planted, yet they weren't there in September. I think, I took pictures of those trees, I was speaking to the mayor. I don't know if you're using the royal "we" when you say "we" when the trees were planted, but if you were there, you had to see this in September. If you planted a tree, you saw this. So if you could address that and clarify that, because I can't make sense of that. So if you can make sense of how you planted a tree but didn't know about this entire field full of material, that blows my mind. It's unbelievable, as Mr. Angel said, so. And I'd also like to know what was unbelievable that you found there? If you could enumerate some of that material. There was what appeared to be skitter, not skitter, either skitter or front-end loader tracks that were recent, that are in the videos, that indicates recent industrial activity, whether it was a front-end loader being hand-loaded with material debris removal to cover up, not to make a pun about the cover up, but the whole area's been covered with, with stuff that no one would want to have on their yard or even adjoining. So there's also, just to validate, a stream that does appear to run straight over to Lake George. There's photograph of running water. You know, we had that big rain on, I believe it was either Sunday night. I would have liked to have taken pictures of that night, and that stream would have probably been just running straight towards Lake George. Now, that's on about an eighth of the property towards the southeast. And there's conduits there, in some of the videos, four-inch PVC conduits. It shows that there was a known water flow going on, and it's trying to be mitigated. So whoever did this project onsite was managing a active running flow. So, but there's no embankments, there's no erosion control, there's no, number one, gravel that would mitigate erosion, there's no fencing that you would see at a construction site where there's a brown soil project at all. If I did this, I think I'd be up in the federal pen. So I've been hearing mention about the Water Municipality Board, some of the members are on here. That's your space there. This was also done by the town. So you've got two entities there, but no one knows anything. So I don't want to beat a dead horse, but if no one knows anything, that speaks to malfeasance on everyone in the group. And unfortunately, we don't, and most people find this unbelievable, we don't have a method as constituents to change that. It's a circular loop, where you have the administrative aspects, which Mr. Guzio runs, and then we have the council, and it's a circular loop of accountability. And if it's closed, we don't have any interaction with accountability for ourselves to get accountability. So if you could speak to how we can get accountability and trust, and explain the apparent paradoxes of statements made, various members, like Ken Langiel and the mayor, I'm just trying to come to understand, but there's a modicum of understanding here. We have nothing. It's been four days. I had to take my time to go out, take videos of this. And it's because I, you know, I did that, I wouldn't have done this. Maybe this is the chickens coming home to roost from the times that I've been here in the past, and I've lost confidence. And here I am again, and these chickens, these are buzzards for you. So maybe this is karma, and I'm done.
Anyone else like to speak? We've got a motion on the table, and the motion was?
Your worship, the motion on the table, if I can find it again. Here, I was actually, while Mr. Powell was talking, I was looking at Google Earth. I was curious about, and I didn't realize how far it was away from the water, but anyways, another question. The staff be directed to advise council in a timely fashion on suggested options for the cleanup of plastics and assorted debris resulting from the spreading of compost overs, or Class B, as they call it, on the town-owned former sawmill property in Lake George. The intention is of the motion, it counts, given all the discussion tonight, that staff will go back, look at the options, take a really deep look at this thing, and come back in a timely fashion, which would be, I would assume, committee of the whole, and would say, okay, this is what we have to do. I'd like to also add to the motion, if the secondor will agree, that any costs incurred by residents in the Lake George area for well testing or water testing be reimbursed by the town of Yarmouth.
Did you second that? Okay. Any more discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Counselor Mooney, you are going to do.
Your worship, thank you, your worship. I'd like to make a motion that the town of Yarmouth and the water utility hold a public meeting with Lake George residents and with all other related entities, i.e. Department of Health, Public Health, Environment, and Natural Resources.
Second. Moved and seconded, discussion? Questions? Questions been called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Did the counselor have an idea for a timeframe for that meeting?
I was going to ask, I was going to take a, take some phone calls with Environment, to get all related parties together, but hopefully, you can see soon as possible.
Do we want to test anything first?
Testing.
It's what?
It's what, we want to get the test to show it's possible.
Okay. I'm just thinking, we want to do some testing before we go to the meeting, because you don't want to be arguing about what's good and-
I think, your worship, and I can be corrected by the CAO, but I think the testing is a fairly expeditious process, a matter of just collecting samples, and I think Mrs. Powell's comment about an independent person, I think that would be wise and prudent, that we get an independent person to do the collection of samples, to do that, so that there's no possible accusation that we're doing whatever, whatever. So my thought would be to the, I think if council agrees, the direction of staff would be to get an independent body to do the collection of the samples, and to take the samples to the Yarmouth Regional Hospital, where they will do the testing. And then that way, it can be as independent as we can make it, make it as independent. But that can be done very expeditiously. I mean, that could be done, those test results come back very quickly. We get our test results from the water utility very fast.
Well, Yarmouth Hospital is independent, but if you want to-
I mean, it is, it is, you can't get much more, it is-
Oh, my goodness.
I'm afraid we've been-
Did you, Mr. Gray, did you pass that issue somewhere else, really? Out of this? Really? Did you have, did you want to say something else? Just-
I was just talking to some of the people that were there, and it would be okay if maybe we could set up some kind of meeting in maybe three weeks, something like that? That way, we can get our, like, some of us just learned of this this week, so we kind of want to do our background history and, you know, so would that be, I mean, you guys can contact one of us, or?
Sure.
I believe you got my phone number and stuff, so. All right?
Good.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Are we, if you want to come up to the microphone?
Where this is all done, sometimes it can get blurred out, but this is a real important thing. I just want to run this by council, and tell me what you think. There's a lot of incompetence that went on here, all the way down the train, and they should have known, after they've put the first truckload or they dumped it out there, that they weren't bringing the right stuff to the right place. Somebody should have come up and said something. I'd like to see somebody making a motion, and you run it by, the competency of how this town's running, and the people that are running it, and the people that are on the department heads. It seems to me there's so many breakdowns of communication and everything else, and you don't know, I don't know if the mayor knows, I don't know if the CAO knows. Let's get to the bottom of it and do a, do an investigation, or maybe I'm out in left field and I don't know what I'm talking about.
No, no, you're not in left field. That's, it's all going to be part of a report. We all want to know what happened, how it happened, we all want to know that.
Thank you very much, your worship.
Every one of us.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Okay, good. So, Counselor Mooney, did yours go through? Did we just vote on yours?
Yes, we did.
They voted? Okay, so we're onto the next one? Okay. Thanks again, everyone who came to speak, and we really do appreciate it.
It is. I think it's very important to note again in closing, to make sure people leave. We are, I know I can speak for myself, only for myself, I'm very sorry, even though I didn't know what happened, I now saw what happened, I'm very sorry for what happened. And whatever I can do to make it right, I plan to do as an elected official of the town. Now, I'm just one voice around the table, but I got a feeling, most of my colleagues are feeling exactly the same way. I feel terribly bad. I mean, here, we Bragable Communities in Bloom, and all the work we do to make this town a beautiful place to live, and then we're contributing to something like that, it's just unfathomable. It's an embarrassment, there's no question. So, I just want to give you my apology.
Request for decision to amend transit bus fare. We aren't? Oh, my goodness, no, I was just going. Sorry, I skipped two. Additional staff for parks and grounds. Go ahead.
This is probably not a timely place to bring this up, but anyway, but I'm gonna bring it out, I'm bringing it up anyway. Your worship, I'd like to make a motion that we refer to budget the adding of at least two more seasonal staff to the park and ground staff within our public works budget department. It's my motion, if there's a secondor, I'll speak to it. Your worship, your worship, it was noted by the judges on three different occasions over three years, that one of the problems that Yarmouth faces in our parks and grounds is that we have insufficient staff, and there was a concern over the training of our staff. That is a concern. There's no question, with the amount of work and parks that we have, and right now, we're looking at even another park, Doug Malonson Park, we really have got to look at adding some staff to the Parks and Grounds Department. We have three employees there now, I believe, to cover the entire town, I mean, just watering baskets, doing whatever, whatever. So, I'm, this is a referral to budget, and this is something we can hash out during budget time. So, it's not a yes or no tonight, it's just a matter of, let's get it on the table.
Thank you. Counselor McCaughy?
Thank you, your worship. Counselor, I don't disagree, but I have questions and concerns about cost. And my, one of my questions is, are you looking for full-time or summer and seasonal? So, my question to the CAO, do we already employ seasonal workers every year, two or three? Three? So, you're looking for an additional two, which would make it five, which would make it eight people in parks? We have three, we have two or three full-time? Three seasonal workers? And in the summer, we have three more? Park time? Higher students? Two, two or three?
Three seasonal and two students.
Okay, so that's five. And you want two more students?
More de-seasonal staff.
Seasonal, so that would make five all season.
Five seasons.
How many months a year are you looking at?
Jointly seasonal, whatever. What's your seasonal? Nine months.
Nine months. Roughly, what cost would that be? In budget? Okay, I'm just trying to get around there. Okay, just, we'll discuss that in budget. Thank you.
Okay. Motion's on the floor, any more discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor? Contrary? Motion carried. Thirty-seven Clements Avenue, think that can go to Police Advisory. Go ahead.
So, I don't have to say anything? Oh.
Did you write them, yeah?
That staff be directed to investigate a way to protect the home and property of thirty-seven Clements Avenue from vehicles failing to stop at stop sign on Cliff Street and ending up in the yard where they caused considerable damage. This just happened to him the other night, again, another vehicle broke all the front barrier that's there and put tire marks and everything in his yard, four o'clock in the morning.
Did he call the police?
Yes, and it happened again two years ago, where the guy actually got out, left the truck in the yard and took off. So, every couple of years, this happens, so, just wondering, maybe that the stop sign could have lights or something to, because, or a sign that actually says dead end or something, because you're coming to the end of an actual street, and then it goes each way, so.
I got, there's no secondor, no, not yet, but I, I...
I'd like to make a recommendation for Police Advisory.
Yeah, I mean, you can't put a light on every, top of every street, okay? Okay.
And traffic.
So, do I need a secondor for, to move it to?
Second.
Oh, you already seconded that motion.
Yeah, sorry.
He already seconded, so we have...
We prefer it to Police Advisory.
Okay. So, we're just leaving it? We have to vote on that motion?
The motion is to require staff to investigate, so if you refer to a committee, that should be motion.
Yes. So, we, what I'm saying is, we have to vote down the motion that was...
No, we shouldn't refer the whole motion out to Police Advisory, and we'll give you that report.
Cableing to the report.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, I'm trying to...
Should this be done through committee of the whole? Go ahead.
I have a question of why we have our motions ahead of us, everybody already knows what motions we're going to make, and why someone just doesn't say, your motion's not correct, this is the way it should be, so that we'll know.
It is.
Well, now, we're going to send it to somebody else, so, not staff. Now, we're sending it to the Police Advisory? So, who do you send it to? Should I say staff or Police Advisory?
Well, the intention, Counselor Dennis, your motion is an excellent motion. Where it is a police matter, it would normally go to the Police Advisory Committee, which Counselor Dawes and I sit on, at which time, we would meet with the Staff Sergeant and the staff, and that they would in turn, would in turn, come back with a recommendation to us, saying, okay, this is what should be done, and then we would bring that back to council, and the council would then act accordingly on that.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Well, if it's a, if it's a, if it's a police enforcement issue, that would be the case. If it is a signage issue, then the traffic authority, the traffic authority would be the person, the staff person. So, if you, you know, if you believe the solution to this is a different sign, a better sign, whatever, then referring it to staff would be fine.
Do you want to leave it to staff? Okay. So, where are we now? We're gonna vote on leaving it to staff? Yeah, it was moved and seconded, that piece. Okay?
We want to refer the piece to the Police Advisory.
Yeah. Okay.
Question, throwback.
Question's been called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Okay. Request for decision to amend transit bus fare. Any discussion?
Questions?
Questions been called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Request for decision, transit soft launch plan.
Who gets presented?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Questions?
Questions been called? All those in favor? Yes? Deputy?
Is this a chance to actually promote that moment? Did you want to take a moment and just help with the promotion of that? Maybe Caroline?
Want to speak to that, Caroline? Caroline. Caroline, do you want it?
Did you want to? If not, that's fine.
So, January eighteenth, four o'clock, so that's Monday, at four at Town Hall, we will have a, what we're calling a soft launch of the, of the transit system. So, what happens then?
So, on the eighteenth, the thought is that that would be a good time to do a press release. Staff will have packages available with all the information on the new transit system and the promotional events that we would like to organize. On the nineteenth, in the afternoon, from two to four, we're gonna actually run the service, do a test run for counselors, to have an opportunity to wait at one of the stops along the way and get on and try out the service. Myself, Chad, and Natalie will be available to answer questions. Nick is gonna film it. We're hoping to, the idea is to educate you on the new service and get you to have a good understanding of how it works and where the stops are, how the smart fare technology works, give an opportunity to train the driver. After that, we're proposing a scavenger hunt on the twenty-sixth as the official soft launch date, in which we are going to invite members of the public to come. We will give out a scavenger hunt list, a free transit day pass, which will entitle them to ride all day for free, on and off, and the person who finds all the items on the list and gets back to Town Hall, using the transit system to find the items, will win a month pass for our new transit system. And this is just, once again, a promotion, promotional opportunity, but also a training opportunity for us to kind of work out all the kinks and get some feedback from the public, to make sure that everything we've planned is gonna work properly. And the official, official launch date, service running, hopefully, all the kinks worked out, will be February first.
Did, are we putting something in the paper? Have we put something in the paper with regard to the scavenger hunt? Or, did we do that?
I was hoping when we did the press release, that we could advise that that would be something.
I was just looking at the dates, because I probably, I can take some information from what's there, because if we wait until the eighteen, we've got a lot of press, we'll do the nineteen, and then the next issue comes out, it's only on the twenty-sixth, so I might just take some information.
Sure, absolutely. I didn't want to go until council approved it.
Yeah, no, I just want to make sure that, yeah, good. Counselor Dennis?
Thank you, your worship. Caroline, I called you today, but you're off. I had some citizens wanting to know the bus route, so, once you have a map that you could send out to us, I'd appreciate it, so that we can share it with the people.
Yeah, so, we'll have everything finalized, packages ready, brochures, to advertise, posters ready for Monday.
Okay.
If that's acceptable, we're scrunching, so.
Thank you.
You'll have it then, yeah.
Thanks. Okay. So, it's moved and seconded? Any more discussion? Questions been called? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Seventy-nine Main Street, Hope, Hope Center. Did you do a motion? Have to do the motion, yeah. Okay?
I'm over here, seventy, you have any questions?
I second what's been requested.
I'd like to know what's been requested.
I second what's been requested.
Thank you. Sell the property for... Exactly. Okay. Thank you. Did you second that?
Yes, I did.
Questions been called? All those in favor? Aye.
I trust you were all there earlier, and that's why I...
Yeah, I know, but it's not the way. Okay. All those in favor? Contrary? Motion carried. The report? Yes, sir.
One quick, seventy-nine Main Street, now, I don't see it on my agenda here.
No.
Was it, they just came and gave a presentation?
Well, we, no, we had the, we were supposed to have the public meeting.
Yeah, sorry, it was advertised twice in the paper, but we missed it in putting together the agenda.
That's why, I didn't see it before me here on, I was looking, and I know we had to pass it here at council, but there was nothing on here, so when you said seventy-nine Main Street and where it was, so, I mean, that's why I said I recommend that we do that for the dollar, but...
Yeah, and all I was saying is, we need, we need to have concrete motions.
Demotion.
That's all. Okay. So, reports, council advisory committees? Do we have anything here? Yes, we do. Deputy?
From the Planning Advisory Committee, number one, I move to proceed to a public hearing in order to consider, and if deemed advisable, amend the planning strategy and the land use bylaw to permit the redevelopment of existing institutional buildings in the residential designation to be considered by development agreement as outlined in Caroline's report.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Questions? You have a question?
I have a question. Just a question to Caroline, I'm assuming that this has come as a result of discussions we had with the former Bowling Lane, is in one of the areas, is that, am I correct on that?
Nope. This was actually, if you remember, I told you at that meeting that there was more coming. This was something I was working on before that, that I thought might be a good idea, but it certainly could apply to that.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, the question is, is there were citizens' concerns at the time about things happening in a residential area that maybe shouldn't happen, like storage of fish and things like that? So, that's on your radar? You, I just wanted to make sure that it was clear, that we want to make sure we have happy residents with whatever's happening there.
Of course. This amendment would just allow us to consider options, so the process that we went through with eleven Queen Street, it would be the same, a public hearing would be held, yeah.
Okay. All right. Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Deputy?
Number two, I move to proceed to a public hearing in order to consider, and if deemed advisable, enter into a development agreement with the developer, Ocean Breeze Estates, for a four-unit building at one Ellis Road, as outlined in Caroline's report.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Questions?
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Citizen advisory committees, planning advisory. Deputy? You still on? Was there anything for, maybe there wasn't? Just did that? Okay, got them down there. Communities in Bloom?
Thank you, your worship. Just a quick motion, Communities in Bloom Advisory Committee is recommending that council, the Town of Yarmouth, participate in the Circle of Excellence Non-Competitive Evaluated Category for the 2016 year at a cost of $815 plus tax in the 5,001 to 10,000 population category.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Questions?
Questions?
Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, your worship. Now, I don't want anyone around the table or anywhere in the room to think that I'm against this, but I do have, I have questions. Eight hundred and fifteen dollars is not a lot of money when you have it, but it is when you don't. Our budget is tight, it's gonna be even tighter this year, and I do believe that Communities in Bloom has its own budget. I don't, I know it was increased an additional 20,000 for the last, for the last, yes, it was. It was increased, it was increased to 20,000 so that four, four or five people could go out to British Columbia. That was last year, 2015. So, your budget, Communities in Bloom, Bloom's annual budget, are requests like this or moments like this, are they not taken into consideration in your budget?
Yeah, it's a good question.
Yes, it is.
I just feel, I'm just wondering, are we paying twice?
No, no, I mean, we have to, council has got to approve, it's, we're an advisory committee, if we're gonna be entering into any competition, council has got to approve the fact that we're entering into the competition. The eight hundred and fifteen dollars is in the, is in the Communities in Bloom budget. That's where it sits there. But, because of transparency, we want you to be aware of the dollar value that we're putting in for that, how much it costs. Now, for the eight hundred and fifteen dollars, we get two judges that come from somewhere in Canada that are here for a whole week, that give this town approximately a twelve, let me finish, Counselor, a twelve-page report on average detailing everything that we can be doing to improve our community. So, it's a very, very good investment, a very good investment, so.
I, I thank you for the explanation, and again, I did, I wanted no one around this table, nor anyone in this room or town, to take this the wrong way. I was just asking for clarification, because it, it reads that you are requesting council to participate at a cost of eight hundred and fifteen dollars plus tax. But what you have now explained to me, as I understand it, is you are now asking council to ratify Communities in Bloom to spend this eight hundred and fifteen dollars plus tax out of Communities in Bloom's budget? So, it's not coming out of Communities in Bloom's budget?
It is, because it's an advisory committee, so, they can't...
Your worship, we have a budget that we run. We don't run every little bill through council, because the Communities in Bloom is a self-sufficient body. But again, to let you know, Counselor, just for transparency, that is how much it costs. No, you're not gonna pay the bill twice. It comes out of our budget, it's, it's all within there, but we just wanted council to be aware of the actual dollar value. That was it.
Good. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you, Counselor Langill, for clearing this up for the public out there that listen and watch, if these questions come up, as you are very aware.
Okay, good. Any more discussion?
Questions.
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Okay. I am at, hey, reports for information, questions for committee chairs? Go ahead, Counselor Mooney.
I have a question for the C.A.O. Somebody asked me this in light of what happened over at Lake George, and one of the comments on one of the websites or one of the Facebook sites was, it doesn't make any difference in, huh?
The true Yarmouth.
No, I don't think it was the true Yarmouth, but do we pay for bottled water in, in Town Hall, Fire Department, or other, other buildings that we control? I know we don't have singular bottles anymore, but I mean bottled water.
We don't, we don't have individuals.
No, that's right. We don't have that anymore.
We do have, we do have water coolers in most of our buildings.
Anything else? Additions? So we are at 11A. Request for decision, Town Hall upgrade RFP reissuance. The reissuing the RFP for the Town Hall upgrade. Natalie sent that out. Okay? Yeah?